Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is May the second, two thousand sixteen. Hard to believe we're already in May. Uh, we're here today for a special meeting. All members of the court are present and the meeting is now called order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation delivered by Shirley Stevens.
Dear very father, we thank you for the opportunity that you have given us today together to discuss the needs of the county. God, we pray that the decisions that would be made here today would be to the benefit of the county. That you would bless us, that you would keep us, that you would guide us. We ask that you would be with our men and women in uniform. Pray that the protection would be upon them and bring them home safe. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Commissioner Cooper, will you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, discussion and possible action regarding financing the construction of a new courthouse annex building. Uh, this is something that we've talked about a few times and, uh, the court had decided that once we received our outside audit report, we would bring this back up and this is actually the, uh, main reason for our meeting here today. Uh, this, this special meeting was called. Uh, I've come up with three options if any of the commissioners have any more. I'm, I'm, uh, sure that all the commissioners would be glad to entertain those. Uh, the first option that I see is we could finance the building by using certificates of obligation for the entire amount. Uh, another option that has not been brought forth before, but, uh, that I think should be considered is certificates of obligation for one million dollars and Harden County bet- pay the balance out of pocket, which would be, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of one point eight, I'm sorry, eight hundred thousand dollars. And then the, uh, third option is one that we discussed before and that is place the item on the ballot and that would be in, uh, November of two thousand sixteen for the, uh, voters to decide. If we decide to go with option A or B, using certificates of obligation, the public still has the right and the opportunity to, uh, voice any concern that they may have and I would certainly, uh, want to hear if any, any, uh, body from the public had a concern about, uh, Commissioner's Court voting on certificates of obligation. At this time, uh, I think I'll turn this over to Commissioner Cooper. He's in charge of the, uh, annex building project and he received some new numbers from, uh, the architect, uh, middle of last week. And, uh...
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Uh, from the information I received from the architect, we're looking at a total construction, uh, cost for the project at one point six, I believe seven, did you have that number?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
One point six seven million. Uh, we're currently under contract with, uh, LaBeach Architect and if I remember correctly, uh, Mitzi can correct me if I'm wrong, they have a, uh, fee of seven percent, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, and then also construct, uh, construction manager at RIS, which is Daniels, uh, is... I'm looking at something new here, so y'all, uh, bear with me. The original price was nine point seven percent and now I'm having... What's the recommendation, Cody, going up to now?
Uh, it was ten point one on our general conditions. It's a four point nine five percent for our fee and then the general conditions on site is going to be ten point one two percent.
Uh, the original was nine point seven and the new, because of the amount lowering, according to, uh, Daniels, the amount lowering, they come up on their, uh, percentage on their fees, uh, for that. So altogether, like the judge said earlier, we're looking at around one point nine to two million total, total cost on this. Uh, that's about all I have, Judge.
Alright, and we have, uh, Mr. Goodson and Mr. Gilli are here today. If, uh, any of the commissioners have any questions, uh, regarding the, uh, financing options, whether we decide on certificates of obligation or an, uh, uh, option on the ballot.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, Mr. Gilli has given you some rough numbers based on the, uh, amounts you indicated at one point eight and one million dollars for the, uh, court, uh, to consider. Obviously, that would need to be adjusted as necessary for, uh, the final numbers that, uh, Commissioner Cooper and the court come up with. Uh, that's probably the number one thing we need to do with you all having two meetings a month. Uh, we can certainly try to have something to you all by next Monday if you chose to a CO, but more likely if you need time to adjust the numbers, then we'll be certainly be back into your second meeting in May. And then we just want to refresh the court shelf busy as always. Uh, there is a, a notice requirement, as the judge noted, uh, to give the public fair notice of your intent to issue debt. Uh, the, by going to either a private sale or public market, you provide, uh, thirty day prior notice in your newspapers of general circulation and as I recall, y'all use two, uh, newspapers that have slightly different dates. So we have to go from the, the, we have to make sure that we run through the longest period of time for the thirty day publication. So, uh, cause of that, that usually unless we set us, uh, and I probably don't say, especially maybe that one is past thirty days, you're probably looking, you know, at, uh, some point, uh, uh, around the first of July to your sale and then it's about thirty days. You're probably looking around, uh, August, um, mid-August, I would think, to have funding and usually sixty to seventy-five days, just to give you us a little cushion in there, we say seventy-five days because, uh, we want to make sure that we have that thirty day publication period and then the, we're working with the Attorney General and with however Mr. Gilli will get up to describe your financing would be. So, uh, plus or minus, that should be the window that we would be looking at, uh, for you all, uh, to consider and adopt. Could be by your, uh, last meeting, uh, in July, uh, which I don't remember what the twenty-one of it is, but, uh, we could look at that for the, uh, uh, for, say, a little bit, pro- probably more like the, the first, um, meeting, uh, in August. So, ha- happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir, uh, two questions that I have. Have you ever run across a situation where someone decided to go for certificates of obligations on half the amount and finance the other half or pay for the other half?
The main thing that is going to be required is, uh, your county auditor, the county judge are just going to have to certify to the Attorney General that there are sufficient unencumbered funds, unencumbered by your budget, unencumbered by your bond prior, bond issue, which is tax pledge, so it's not really an issue, uh, that, that shows that you are going to finance a project, uh, and that it has a cost and, and you're going to go basically in your pocket to fund it. So, yes, uh, it is not a requirement that you fund a hundred percent. It just requires some additional certifications that we, we would need to present and, and Mr. Gilli would need to, uh, have that information to provide if they proceed to a market sale or, or a private placement with someone, depending on the best interest rate for y'all's very good credit rating as you all have. So, uh, I'll let Mr. Gi- Gilli address that, but, uh, yes, it is perfectly fine to, uh, basically fund up to a, a CO issue amount to make the pot full.
Second question is, if we do decide, if this court decides to do that, since we are going to pay out of pocket for some of this project, we can go ahead and get started without the thirty day.
What, what we do is, uh, we, we, we bounce around at, well, yes, what we'd like to do is go ahead and also get a reimbursement resolution. As we tell people, the IRS lets you spend your own money before you issue debt, but in this situation, uh, I doubt you're going to spend more than that amount by the time you got ready, uh, to get going. But at the end of the day, the only thing we remind everybody of is that we've got to get the money i- i- in the bank and we would do this reimbursement resolution, which basically allows you to reimburse yourself. If for whatever reason, uh, the project came in at a lower cost, you still had the full amount of the debt out, you could reimburse yourself for whatever amount, uh, you needed to just to shrink the pot.
You might have already touched on this and I'm invested, but because i- if the court decides to go this route, because of the amount of bonds that has lowered, is your fee going to stay the same?
Our fee usually is based upon, uh, an issue size, but Mr. Gilli and, and them, I'll let them speak for us.
Okay.
Morning, Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors. The, uh, uh, Mr. Cooper, in answer to your question, uh, is not only pretty common that, uh, uh, issuers, uh, make a contribution to a project and borrow the balance. In fact, the rating agencies view that as a positive because you're putting in your equity. Now, having said that, I would caution the court and, uh, against, you know, drawing down your fund balances too, too much because you have a double A three rating, which is very good rating. And if, uh, you, if, if, there's always a tendency to, if you have, accumulate fund balances, to try to use that in your budget process and draw it down. And, uh, it requires a considerable amount of discipline to maintain that balance, but it will pay you in the long run if you maintain healthy balances. Doesn't mean you have to be excessive, but, uh, just to maintain healthy balances because the, uh, credit agencies and the investors like to see those balances and that will contribute to maintaining a strong rating. The, uh, uh, and let's see, uh, there was, I've forgotten what the, uh, senior moment here, what was the, uh, uh, oh, anyway, if you, I'm sorry, did you have a second question? Oh, you mentioned, uh, Guy answered.
Well, I was asking about the fees as well because if the court decides not to go out for bonds at the amount that we originally talked about, but a lower amount, will your fees stay the same?
Uh, if you issued more, uh, the fees would be higher.
Yes.
Uh, it is, we have a, um, minimum fee and I think a million dollars is that fee. I can't tell you what it is, but because on any issue, you do about the same amount of work, uh, some of them you do more, but, uh, there's a minimum amount of work that you have to do, so we have a minimum fee. And the, the answer is yes, it would go down, uh, from the, uh, if you issued two million down to one million, that would, it would be less.
Alright.
Uh, the other thing, it looks like that, uh, the, the effect of the, uh, uh, one point eight million that I was asked to present was, uh, le- uh, uh, maybe two point two cents on the tax rate would be the borrowed amount. I mean, the, uh, the INS effect, point one on a million dollars. So it's really negligible and your values, uh, are up from last year. So, uh, probably, um, um, uh, probably there's going to be very, very little effect on your, uh, probably won't even have to change your rate, I'm guessing, but I can't say that for certain.
You had, uh, you said a million was your minimum fee, but that's not exactly what you meant, right? What you meant was is the fee based on a million dollars of borrowing.
Thank you for correcting that. The par amount, the, the par amount triggers the minimum is the, uh, below that par amount of a million is, I believe, is our minimum fee.
Okay. If you could just kind of say, uh, using both options, whether we borrow the one point eight or the one million, what is the total cost to the taxpayers in the length of time that the, uh, that the...
Yeah, the, uh, the, the one point eight million, we assumed a, uh, an est- now, all these are estimated rates based on the market today.
Yes, sir.
But we assumed that it would go out for twelve years, uh, uh, and the estimated rate would be somewhere, we used two point three percent, probably a little bit under that is what the, uh, real rate would be. Uh, your existing debt pays off in two thousand fiscal, uh, two thousand twenty-three is the last year to pay your existing debt. So what we did in both cases, the million and the million eight, is we, uh, structured some amortizations, a small amount of nominal amortizations up until two thousand and twenty-three. And then after that, we financed, uh, we repaid most of the debt. So overall, your debt is approximately, is not going to change much between, uh, now and the end of the term. With the million dollars, we were able, we were able to shorten up the borrowing to ten years, uh, to, uh, two thousand and twenty-six. So, um, and your total debt service would be about, uh, uh, and between now and twenty-three would, in answer to your question, would be about thirty-three, thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, in either case. Let me see what happened in the first, I'm sorry. Uh, it would be in the fir- in the, with a million dollars, you'd be paying, uh, up until two thousand twenty-three about, uh, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, principal and interest. And then after that, around three hundred and fifty thousand and the one point eight million, it'd be between fifty-five and sixty thousand. And, uh, it goes up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Your current debt service is right now about just under three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so, and your tax values are point, or two point eight billion in, in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, and as I said, on a million dollars, that's like point one cents, not one cent, point one. And, uh, uh, on a million eight, about point two cents. So very negligible effect, uh, blessing there. The, as far as, uh, Guy talked a little bit about the timing, if you're on a fast track, uh, you know, the, if the court meets, the, at the next regular meeting, the court could adopt a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. And what we would recommend, if you need a million dollars, we'd recommend, uh, like a million one, that's a not to exceed amount and we'd calculate what all the, uh, fees are and you'd, you'd borrow probably around, round numbers, a million sixty thousand, something like that. The, uh, uh, but if you were to give your notice of intent at your next, next regular meeting, I think Guy mentioned that you have to publish that notice. So probably at either the, your last meeting in June or sometime, uh, uh, late in July, you could, uh, uh, adopt the ordinance, uh, the order authorizing the issuance and you'd have money somewhere latter part of July and, or Au- August. And that would coincide with, uh, including this debt in, into your budget process and your tax rate calculation.
And if we were to do a, uh, a bond issue, what's the deadline that we have to file and do all of that?
You mean, uh, uh...
For November.
Like a voted, uh, what's that?
I'm, I'm getting off in places where there are experts in the room on elections, so don't, don't let me act like the election expert. But as I recall, the, uh, ballot proposition, uh, follows basically with a mid-August, uh, date. There's a, a fairly well-established timetable already in the Secretary of State, um, uh, website. And let, we'll just recall, the election, of course, is in early November. There's a thirty day, um, uh, period before, uh, any ballot proposition, uh, uh, is deemed incontestable. So that moves you to about mid-December and then, uh, you would have your, uh, period of selling and, and closing. So you're probably looking at something in, uh, I would say January, uh, uh, to fund, uh, probably the end of January would be more likely. Or I'm sorry, yeah, end of January, early February would be the likely funding date on a, a GO bond issue.
I have a question or a comment. Assuming that we are able to maintain our cash reserves, as we believe we, we are, somewhere around a minimum of three million dollars, and right now they're three point nine million dollars. So we comfortably can take nine hundred thousand dollars and still maintain adequate cash reserves. And under the philosophy that the less you borrow and for the shorter period of time, the cheaper it is on the taxpayers, and I believe your charts reflect that, then it looks to me like the comfortable thing for this county is to go the option, I believe it's option B, with certificates of obligation of a million, million one, and then the county finance nine hundred thousand or so. Looks to me like a reasonable approach for this project.
And, uh, the rating agencies, uh, find it acceptable to draw down your fund balance for non-recurring or, i.e. capital projects. So that's a good purpose to use that, uh, and it's, you, it sounds like you have a pretty healthy, uh, reserve. I, I, I can't recall what your, uh, total budget is, but they'll measure it against your total budget, but that sounds like a pretty healthy reserve to ma- continue to maintain, uh, so...
And I see that you've got two point one five interest for the, or estimated interest for selling the bonds on one million and then it jumps up to two point three, which is not a great jump.
No.
But I would think that as you, as a county makes a greater contribution, bonding agencies would feel more secure because you've got money in there just as well as they do.
Well, that's, that's a correct statement, that's the way the rating agencies view it. And I, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that the, uh, the, the two point one five is because the, those are a little shorter and the, the one million dollars can amortize in ten years.
Yeah.
And, uh, that reflects, the, the, the lower rate reflects that shorter amorti- amortization.
Thank you, Mr. Pell. Mr. Roberts, do you have anything? Alright, anything further? I, I feel very comfortable with going with option B as well. Certificates of obligation for one million or, or the, uh, you said one point oh six is what it would actually end up being?
We'd say around the one point one, we, uh, we can all, as, let, let me recall on COs, uh, you can always issue less than your notice provides, you just cannot issue any more.
Okay.
So whether it's one point one, one point two, we're not trying to, uh, kick the number up. We just want to make sure y'all are very satisfied with the totals because once we do that and you back into a cap, then you do have to fill the, fund the balance, so.
So one point one and then the, uh, pay for the balance out of pocket, that's the, uh, option I would consider.
I would, uh, comment on that just a second, Judge. In the beginning, I think Commissioner Kirk and Dallin and I both had went with the, uh, idea that with the amount we were looking at and not knowing exactly what we were going to have in contingency, I was dead set on going with a bond election. I would say that with these numbers, the new numbers out of the audit and these numbers here only going with, uh, whatever we came up with there, I would also agree to go with number two, idea of B.
And we had one other uncertainty was how bad we were going to hit with oil and gas. It looks like that we're plus a little bit on our appraisals rather than being in a big negative like we thought we could be. Judge, I would move that we, uh, go ahead and pursue option B and get the process started and whatever it takes to, uh, issue certificate obligation of one point one million.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper on option B, certificates of obligation for one point one million and Harden County pay the balance out of pocket for the new annex building. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Judge, members of the court. What we'll do, Ms. Gilli, uh, will come up with a, we'll work on a timetable. We'll also come up with the assistance of, uh, the Commissioners Court and your contractors with the, with the number so that we make sure that we've, uh, got this exactly how you all want it. And, uh, then, uh, we'll get with the county and make sure, uh, about the publication dates because again, like I said, that's the next driver after y'all do the adoption. We'll have two things then, or at least two things on the agenda, uh, for the pleasure of the court next week for sort of reimbursement resolution, which again allows you to reimburse yourself if, you know, if you want to adjust the numbers as the project proceeds and then, uh, the, uh, notice of intent to issue.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Goodson and Mr. Gilli.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Appreciate it.
Item number five, Angela Gore, County Auditor, Budget Amendment Regarding Fiscal Year Two Thousand Fifteen Surplus Carryover Funds for All Roden Bridge Precincts. Ms. Gore?
At this time, I would like to request approval for the following budget amendments to the Roden Bridge Fund. To Roden Bridge, number one, line item zero one seven six two one three nine five in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. To Roden Bridge two, line item zero one seven six two two three nine five in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. To Roden Bridge three, line item zero one seven six two three three nine five in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. To Roden Bridge four, line item zero one seven six two four three nine five in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. From the Roden Bridge con- contingency, the total amount is one million, fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. This leaves a balance in the Roden Bridge contingency of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cooper?
We have two different, uh, the one you just read from is replacing the one that was in our package, is that correct? As far as numbers, or am I looking at two different things?
Is it not the same?
The one in the package is from your email a few weeks ago.
Correct, but the numbers should be the same, correct? Were they different?
I was looking at total contingency.
Yeah, you said two sixty-six.
That leaves a balance after these amendments are done in your contingency of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-three cents. The total contingency...
Do you have this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The total contingency for the Roden Bridge is one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. But of that, one million, one point three million, the Roden Bridge one through four gets the amounts that I read off. You have a general Roden Bridge fund, I mean, a line item...
So the general's included in this?
And the one point three, but it's not included in the budget amendment.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Item number six, Commissioner Ken Pell, Precinct Three, Authorization for County Judge to Sign Lease Agreement Renewal Between Harden County Genealogical Society and Harden County for leased office building.
Uh, Judge, this is for the, uh, the lease office building and for the, uh, Harden County Museum that we have. We've been in this for several years now and it's my recommendation, uh, motion that we authorize you to sign.
Thank you, Commissioner Pell. I have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Judge McDaniel, Affirm Appointment of Dr. Jana Winberg to the Position of Local Health Authority. See, Dr. Winberg is here, good morning. Uh, Dr. Winberg was appointed by me, uh, to the position of local health authority on, uh, April the twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen. This is a political appointment by the county judge every two years. Uh, Dr. Winberg is local, she lives in Sillsby and has a clinic here in Coontz. And, uh, she's very enthusiastic about the position and, uh, looks forward to serving the citizens of Harden County and I just ask that the court affirm that appointment. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And if you haven't met Dr. Winberg, she's right here, sitting next to Shirley Stevens and she's looking forward to, in fact, she's already started work, so we really appreciate that and...
Welcome.
She's a, a new face in, in, uh, county government. Thank you very much. Now, item number A is Ken Tretheway, Account Executive at Hart Inter-Civic, Presentation of Information on New Voting Systems. Uh, if you have the agenda that we emailed out Friday, we had, we had the wrong name on there and that was my doings. I put the, put the wrong name on there, so I apologize for that.
Good morning.
This is going to be about a five-minute presentation?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ken Tretheway, I work with Hart Inter-Civic, um, they're your current elections vendor. I've been with them for about ten and a half years now, been working with Ms. Austin throughout that time, so got some history with Harden County. Um, before moving to Hart, I worked for Travis County in the County Clerk's Office in the Elections Division, so I've also been on the county side of things and, um, Hart was our vendor and Travis County still is Travis County's vendor. Um, so just a little background on me. Hart has been in business in elections for a hundred and three years now, um, always in Austin. We do business in seventeen states, but Texas is sixty to seventy percent of our revenue per annum. Uh, this is definitely where our focus is. We build all of our equipment, um, including what you see here in Sugar Land, Texas. Um, so this is our home, home turf, so to speak. I want to talk to you about a couple of things that are happening in, in elections in Texas and across the country, but mainly in Texas. Um, the first is the movement to refreshing the election equipment that was purchased about eleven years ago, um, by most of the counties in the country. And the second is the movement towards vote centers in Texas and we'll talk about exactly what that means. Uh, so that's my agenda. Um, I would like to talk about everything that's been going on in Texas over the last several years and what's going on right now. Uh, go into detail about vote centers and the advantages of that election model. Talk about the new voting system I have behind me, Verity Touch. And, um, then I'd like to talk about a, an early adopter program that we're offering to Texas counties who would be interested in, uh, signing up a little bit early and saving some money in the process.
We're all about saving money.
Yeah, I hear that.
Yes, sir.
You've got that great credit rating. Okay, so, um, I guess the first domino in the row to fall that kind of led to where we are today was the famous hanging Chad incident in Florida. I'm sure you all remember that, uh, the Bush versus Gore election took months and months to sort that out. Um, so that was a big mess in the year two thousand. The federal government, as usual, came out with a, a response to that a little while later. Uh, in this case, it was the Help America Vote Act passed in two thousand two. That did a lot of things, but the thing that we're mainly interested in today is it basically required all the counties all across the country to buy new voting systems. So because of that federal mandate and there was federal money to go with it, uh, everybody in, across the country is pretty much in the same timeline. They all bought systems around the two thousand five, two thousand two to two thousand five timeline. In Texas, almost everybody bought those in two thousand five. So at the time, they were, all those systems that were being created and sold, um, were expected to have a working life of about ten years. So here we are on year eleven, which is why, uh, this movement is happening now. Uh, so you'll see in, in the printout of this presentation, um, some blurbs from a lot of articles. There's been a ton of press about this. So you'll see in in the printout of this presentation, um some blurbs from a lot of articles. There's been a ton of press about this. Some of you may have seen it. Of course, the press always likes to cry that the sky is falling, so they looked ahead to these big two thousand sixteen elections, the presidential year, and all of our voting equipment is eleven years old and, you know, it's all gonna explode and it's gonna be terrible. So we'll see. Um, you know, I don't think things are that dire, but we are in a place where we need to be thinking about this. Uh, here in Texas, uh the first time I heard the message delivered was in two thousand thirteen. Secretary of State's office told all of the election administrators and county clerks at their summer conference to start communicating with their courts about this, this need to think about the next voting system. Since there was grant money with HAVA and there's not any grant money this time, you know, the Secretary of State's office recognized it takes time, time for counties to plan for these kinds of things. So they've been beating this drum for a few years now. I also heard in two thousand fourteen at the Judges and Commissioners Annual Conference in Lubbock uh that the court members were given the same, same message. And then just last Friday in Horseshoe Bay, the West Texas Judges and Commissioners, that was another item on their agenda, and I was at that conference. So we're all hearing the same message. It's definitely something that, that's going on. Twenty-one of the Texas counties have already refreshed their voting systems. I changed that over the weekend from twenty to twenty-one 'cause on Friday, San Jacinto County voted to buy the system that you see here. So it's now twenty-one. Five of those counties did so because they had emergencies with their equipment, so of course, that's the last thing we want to happen. So we're, we're hoping to get this wave of refresh installed before people, more, more counties start having problems with the old, old machines. I'm probably doing talks like this two a week, uh every week since about December. So it's, it's happening all around us. So the, so that's the refresh wave. And then the second trend I wanted to talk about is vote centers. And so because counties are in a position where they need to think about buying a new voting system already, and so many people are interested in vote centers, then the logical thing uh for most of them is to think about buying a system that will enable them to, to do vote centers. So what do I mean by vote centers? Vote centers is sort of like early voting. You know how you, no matter where you live in the county, when you vote early, you go to the early voting site and they pull you up in the poll book and you get your ballot stolen no matter what your address is. Vote centers allows that same model to happen on election day. So no matter where you happen to be on election day, if you see a vote here sign, you can pull in there and vote. So you don't have to rush home to your particular polling site and try to get there by seven o'clock. So that's the number one reason that counties are interested in that is convenience for the voters. The main question, I'm sure the main phone call that Ms. Austin's office gets on election day are voters calling to say, where do I vote? Well, if you're doing vote centers, the answer to that question is anywhere you see a vote here sign. So that's very helpful for the voters.
And Ken, what's the reason we can't do that today?
You can't do that today because you're voting with paper ballots.
But we do that on early voting as well, so how, I'm just trying to understand how we can go to any voting place on early voting.
Because I, I think this, this, it's a state requirement, and I think their logic is, you know, if you had twenty vote centers all around the county and anybody could go to any one of those sites and vote, then Ms. Austin's office would have to try to guess how many of each ballot style to pre-print and have available at each of those twenty sites without knowing where people were gonna show up that day.
I see.
And so the odds of you running out of a particular style somewhere are just too high, and so the state doesn't allow it. Uh, the main reason for provisional voting on election day is also to do with people showing up at the wrong site. Now, if a voter goes to a place, they, they wanna vote and that's not their site, then the poll workers try to redirect them to the correct site so that their vote will count. They may not have time to get there. They may refuse to go there, in which case they're given a ballot anyway because you can't turn anybody away. But then the ballot board will meet and decide that that voter's vote won't count because they weren't in the right polling place. So that's a disenfranchisement of that voter. And again, with vote centers, since there are no incorrect polling sites, then that main reason for provisional voting goes away. Another advantage of vote centers is you can, if you choose to, reduce the number of your polling sites. So I think right now you have twenty?
Nineteen.
Nineteen polling sites. So if you choose to, and you, you're moving to vote centers, you can reduce that down to sixty-five percent of that original number for the first year. And then if you want to, you can reduce it all the way down to fifty percent of that number for the, for then on. You don't have to reduce them. When Travis County, my county, went to vote centers, we didn't reduce any of the sites. We just made all two hundred sites vote centers and anybody could go anywhere they wanted to. Uh, over the years since then, they've started reducing some. Uh, but that's totally up to the county. You can keep all nineteen of your sites if you want to, or you can go all the way down to ten after the first year if you want to. So that's your choice, but a lot of counties find that, that possibility appealing because all of your sites have to be accessible. So, you know, my main job at Travis County was the sites coordinator to manage all those two hundred sites that we had. And they all have to be compliant with HAVA, so you slope, slope up to the door can't be too steep. Door can't be too narrow, you know, the sill can't be too high. Parking lot has to be paved and level, you know? So I was traveling around with my slope meter and my tape measure, trying to find sites that would be compliant. Well, a lot of counties have trouble with that, so if you can reduce your sites through vote centers, you can reduce those sites that are, that are gonna take a lot of uh work to make compliant. Um, and then finally, a lot of counties have recruiting trouble, you know? I don't know if that's the case here in Harden County, but a lot of counties I've talked to, it's getting harder and harder to find enough poll workers to work the elections. If you can reduce your number of sites, you need fewer people. So again, that takes that pressure off. So there are many advantages to doing it, and of course, if you're hiring fewer poll workers, your elections are gonna cost less. So in your packet, uh page seven, you have the most current elections list of vote center counties, just in case you're curious about it. Uh, this is the Secretary of State's list for the March primary. And that list is growing every election. Basically, the Secretary of State, their office allows, I think it's five counties at a time, to go through the process. And once you've been deemed successful, then you become a permanent vote center county, and then they'll let another county into that sort of um probation slot, so to speak. So they, they like to manage that process and make sure everything's fair. And so they allow only five counties at a time to be in that intermittent, intermediate status. And so that's probably the main reason why this list is still only thirty-five or forty counties long. I'm talking to counties every day of the week, and I know, you know, there's at least this many more who want to get on this list. And they're getting the systems they need and waiting their turn. So um the point the judge brought up is um if you wanna go to vote centers, then you have to move to electronic voting. So right now, you guys use paper ballots for voting. So I wanna talk about some of the advantages of moving to electronic voting. Frankly, I don't really have a dog in the fight. Hart has a paper ballot system as well as an electronic system. Um, I do think there are advantages to electronic though, so I wanted to communicate those, just in case.
Can I break in just a second?
Of course.
Uh, the idea of uh electronic voting. Whenever I go in to vote, I use the machine, but the way this county is set up, if you, if you go in each election place and watch, the older people's not gonna vote with this right here. They're gonna use paper ballot. So I don't think, from what my observation is, I don't think that this county is ready to go a hundred percent electronic. I don't know what the other commissioners feel.
Well, my thoughts are that a lot of elderly people-
We, we have a lot of the older people using the machines, yeah.
My thoughts are- Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
I'm trying to, well, how many, how many people are at, what's the percentage of the voters that are voting that are actually using paper ballots still? Is it a quarter?
Maybe. But th- there's a lot of the older people-
It's not how like it was when we first started. It's, I mean, a lot of people-
And then after you kindly, they know how to use it, they say, oh, that wasn't so hard. I mean, you know.
I'm just, I, I've got a lot of elderly friends and a lot of elderly people in our precinct who uh would like to continue to vote papers. And I support them as well as the other seventy-five percent who don't.
Sure.
So I'll just make that, put that on the record. The twenty-five percent matter.
I agree. I, I agree that we should make sure if someone wants to vote, whether it's by paper or by electronic, they should be able to vote.
Did I misunderstand you to say if we do have the uh centers like you're talking about, there will be no paper?
Not, not on election day. You, you could still use paper for early voting and you'll have to use paper for mail ballots. And so a lot of people-
But they won't have an option on election day.
Correct.
I don't agree with that. If we're saying that where you could vote anywhere.
Right.
If we don't choose to do that, then we could do that.
And, and that's a good idea, and it's cost effective because you're not gonna have as many.
Much cheaper.
Yeah, but we also have this other side. We're not Travis County. This is Harden County and especially Mr. Pelt and, and Mr. uh Kirkendall. Uh, the areas that they have, they have a lot of people that are setting their ways. I mean, that's, that's just the norm. That's what they're used to, so.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna make it harder for people to vote. And if you got, like, like another said, you got people who are already setting their ways as far as they're gonna, they, it, it's gonna be paper or nothing. And you don't wanna turn people away from the polls. You want people to come vote. You know, it's al- it's already, it's already hard enough to get people to the polls. We want them to come vote.
It's a lot easier for your office if there was no paper, as far as counting and everything else.
Well, my wife's not elderly and she'd be mad if we didn't have paper ballots, I can tell you that.
Well, I mean, a lot of uh these elderly people that we're thinking about, they also have a smartphone in their pocket or their purse.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're getting on Facebook and looking at their grandkids' pictures. So I think we sometimes underestimate their level of comfort.
But it was a gradual process to begin with.
I mean, this screen is pretty much, you know, like their phone. They're gonna touch their choice.
You're treading, you're treading in, in real dark water.
Yeah, very, very, very dark.
Decide for how people think.
Okay. Well, um, so let me, let me just run through what I think are some of the advantages of electronic and you guys can shoot them all down and, and and get whatever you guys prefer. So number one is cost. Every ballot you print costs about thirty to thirty-three cents. You have to print more ballots than you need because you can't run out. So the first thing you're gonna notice when you don't have paper ballots is how much less you're gonna spend on every election. All those paper ballots also have to be managed. You know, those are live ballots that can be, you know, can affect the outcome of the election. So they have to be audited. They have to be kept secure. You know, both the voted ones and the unvoted ones have to be tracked. So there's a lot of management that goes on with those paper ballots that goes away when you don't have them. They also have to be stored for twenty-two months after the election. The ballot boxes. Right now, you guys have these large rolling ballot tubs um that are, I'm sure, impossible for most of your poll workers to deliver. And so that, there's a transportation cost there and there's a storage cost. They don't stack. They have a very large footprint. You know, these little devices close up into this small suitcase. Uh, so there's some efficiencies also with the size of the machinery. With paper ballots, um a human being can mark a piece of paper in an infinite number of ways. They can fill in the box like they're supposed to. They can try to check a box and then swipe another box with the end of their checkmark. They can put an X. Do the same thing. They can circle the box and not really hit it. There's just no limit to what a human being can do on that paper ballot. All of those marginal marks um that I just described would have to be analyzed by the ballot board to determine what that voter's intent was. Uh, so there's gray area. There's stuff for people to argue about. With electronic voting, all of that goes away. They're just ones and zeros. So it's either a mark or it's not a mark. There's no way it can be interpreted any other way. Because of that, what we found in Travis County when we moved away from paper was how we suddenly had fewer recounts, which was great for us. Cause once the candidates figured out that the only ballots that could change in a recount were the mail ballots, and there were so relatively few of those, then, you know, they didn't bother to go to the expense and we didn't have to go to the trouble of doing those recounts. With paper ballots, since there are marginal marks and things for the ballot board to dispute, when you have a recount, you can get a different result. Cause there's human marking involved and then human interpretation of that marking. Again, with recounting electronic elections, the same result comes out every time. So um I think that inspires greater confidence when you don't have results changing the more, the more times you're looking at it. And finally, I think this one's a little counterintuitive, but electronic voting is more secure than paper ballots. My three-year-old niece can make a mark on a piece of paper and change how the scanner will read that ballot. And for electronic voting, if a voter were to use this device, the cast vote record from their session is stored on the hard memory of this device. It's also stored on the hard memory of the controller that controls this one and how many you have in your polling place, a second place. And it's stored on the little flash memory stick that's sealed and locked in that storage compartment that gets read into the tabulation software on election night. So it's three places that every cast vote record is stored. So if someone were to wanna tamper with the election, they would have to do it in such a way that all three of those records would still match. And of course, there's audit trails running in the background on an electronic system. So they would have to do it in such a way that it wasn't detected by the internal audit logs of the system itself. Whereas a piece of paper, you know, one of my counties in Oregon, there's a lady who worked election for years. She's in jail now. She had a pencil up the sleeve of her shirt and she was in the counting station and got caught altering ballots. Now, nobody knows for how mu- many years she'd been doing that. So, I mean, that's something people don't think about, but it, it's kinda counterintuitive, but electronic um voting, in my opinion, is more secure than paper ballots. All right. So let's talk about uh the Verity Voting System. We've had the Hart voting system in place in Texas for about thirteen or fourteen years. Some of the counties like Brazos and El, and Harris were early adopters. Um, most of the counties, again, bought it in two thousand five. As I said, we did revise that system several times over the first seven or, seven or so years of its life. So it's up to version six point two point one now. So as we look forward to this refresh that was coming, we knew was coming now, when all the counties were gonna be buying their next system, first question we had to ask was, do we wanna keep revising that old system or do we wanna start over and build something new? Well, we very quickly came to the conclusion that we needed to start over. One reason is uh there have been new federal certification guidelines since we created that system fourteen, fifteen years ago. And there was no way to make the old system compliant with the most recent federal standards. Right now, Texas allows that old two thousand and two standard, but we didn't wanna be put in a position where, you know, three years from now, the state said the two thousand and two standard is no longer good enough and those systems are no longer certified. So we needed a system that would comply with the most recent um federal guideline. And second, when you're talking about a, an electronic system, and that's whether you're using paper ballot scanners or a touchscreen electronic voting system like this, you can't maintain a, an electronic system like that indefinitely. All the components change, you know, the display screens, the capacitors, all those um bits that go together to make one of these machines. Companies don't keep making those same things forever because technology changes super fast. So in order to start that supply chain over again, we wanted to create a brand-new system and start over with the most recent components. So that's what we did. Uh, second decision was, what have we learned over the last fourteen, fifteen years that we can improve on our old system with a new one? Well, the main thing was it needs to be easy for everybody involved. And it needs to be small and light. Because the county has to store this for most of the time, and then it has to be transported all over the county. And then poll workers, which are usually seasoned citizens, have to set these things up and manage them. So we decided to go with this very small uh footprint and very lightweight. I don't know if I've mentioned this since we started talking, but this little tablet just nests in this cubby hole here. The power cord goes in this storage compartment, and then you just close the suitcase and carry it off. So it's a very small and portable device. All through, yes.
What is it, what?
Twenty-eight pounds.
What do those other E-slates, oh, weigh?
Your E-slates are about forty.
And that's hard for them.
Oh, yeah.
People don't, that's.
I'd say that.
And throughout the process, um our constant mantra internally was, how can we make this easier? How can we make it easier for the elections office when they're setting up? How can we make it easier for the elections office when they're setting up their elections, when they're running their results at night? How can we make it easier for the county to store and deliver, as I said? How can we make it easy for poll workers to manage? And so everything that we've learned from all of our customers, all the enhancement requests they've made and the suggestions, we logged all that for the last decade and incorporated those ideas into the new system. Let's talk about the, the main voting device is this one, it's called Verity Touch. It comes with a booth, you may or not be able to see over there. So you can use it either in the booth that it comes with or as a tabletop model. And as I show this around, I have counties that like both, both ways, so I'll show it both ways. But this is a device that the poll worker, I mean, the voter interacts with. So they're going to see this modern interface, that they just touch their choices. They can change the language themselves on the screen at any time and change back. They can change the font size, if they forgot their reading glasses, they can increase the font size. So lots of voter convenience features built into it. It also, when they, we're having this presidential election this year. A lot of people are going to come in and want to just vote straight party or just vote for president. The review screen is accessible at any point during the ballot, so they can do that. Go to the review screen, cast their ballot. They don't have to page through the entire ballot to do it.
Can I iron it up again?
Of course.
You might have already went over it, and I was daydreaming or something, but when will our machines we currently have not be certified by the state? Or is there a timeline?
No, there's no timeline for that.
How many do we have, Ms. Austin?
Oh, we have probably twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four of each one of them.
I understand.
And there's one.
The setting of them up for early voting and all that, but typically on Voting Day, because the number, the number of crowd that you have coming to vote in a particular voting place, you're not, in other words, you're not going to have two in Batson, are you, at one location? Or will you? Two, two machines?
Well, we, there's an E-slate, there's an E-scan, and there's a JBC. So there's one of all three of those there.
At least one.
At least one of, you know, because E-scan's for paper, E-slate is your electronic, and then your JBC works with your electronic. So you have to have those three there. And then Sillsby and Lumerton, your larger ones, sometimes there's three, sometimes there's six in, in one location.
So in order, in order to maintain that same number eventually, if we went to new machines, we'd have to have twenty-three of them.
Of each one.
Of each kind.
Of each one.
Of each one. Explain that to me.
Okay, well, you got twenty-three JBCs, you got twenty-three E-slates, and you've got twenty-three E-scan's. Next one, I may have twenty-four, twenty-five of some of them.
Ken, have y'all, with the current models we have now, have y'all upgraded to this new machine? So if we decided to replace the E-scan, would that be a new machine and not the old machine?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's just like this, but it has a scanner right here. And then we now have a collapsible ballot box. So it folds down to where it's only four or five inches thick. And it just pops open, and you mount the suitcase on top of it, and the ballots drop into the expandable ballot box.
You wouldn't have those big old like drawings?
That's the E, that's the E-scan's?
All of ours is out of warranty. I sent seven in a few months ago. County had paper all that.
I agree that, that we need to upgrade our technology. I just don't agree with going away with paper ballots. A second there.
Can these machines here be intermingled with the machines we already have?
Well, you would have to build two separate databases, and then you would have to have, have some way to fuse it.
When we make a deci, if we make a decision to start with a new system, then we've got to replace immediately twenty machines or so.
Twenty, thirty.
About seventy.
About seventy?
Yes, sir.
Because you have more than one in some places.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And the recommendation is every decade, is that right? About every ten years, we're going to be replacing? I think that's reasonable.
Since all of the counties bought these at about the same time, and it was done with grant funds, and now it's coming time to replace those as they're going out, is there any talk at all that there may be any grant money available?
Not a word.
We're all on our own, huh?
Well, that's the way it always starts, cops on the street or anything else.
First one's free.
Right.
Starts out there, force you to do it.
But we are, most of the counties that have already bought have used five-year payment plans, like Jefferson County used government capital when they bought from us. Wichita County used a local bank that gave them five-year payments with a better rate than government capital was offering. And they're doing the payments in arrears.
Did Jefferson County buy these?
No, they bought our legacy system, the E-slates.
Oh, really?
Because these aren't certified yet.
Okay. And the E-slates are the ones we have now with the little dial?
But Jefferson County was using ESNS's Ivotronics, which is our competitor's system, which they had had failures with their central scanner, and they were very unhappy with the system and with the SNS, so. They were going to wait for this, and then when they had that last bad election last November, they said, we can't wait anymore, so they bought what we had certified, which was the old system.
Do you have a price on what we would be replacing?
Well, we did a quote, but it's, we did it back in October. I just looked at it before I stood up here for the first time in a long time. But it was based on us going all electronic. So it's, it was based on you needing about a hundred and forty machines, because basically, you need an analogous number to however many privacy booths you have out there now for people to mark paper ballots, right? So if you have three people to come in, you don't want them to wait and vote one at a time. And right now, with your paper ballots, they don't. They can all go and mark their ballots at the same time. So we were figuring on about a hundred and forty or so machines, and, you know, ballpark number of around eight hundred.
Eight hundred what?
Thousand.
What I thought that, that's out of our ballpark.
So if we cut that in half to seventy, we're looking at four.
Yeah, probably.
About every decade.
It's the time of we live here.
At the time you pay them off, it's time to go ahead and buy some more.
Exactly.
It's like a call.
Right.
They detach for curbside?
Yeah, so we talked about the voting machine for the voters. What separates Hart's systems from all the other systems in the country is we use a controller model. So this device is only accessed by the poll worker. And right now, I have two machines attached to it, so I have two icons here on this dashboard. I could have up to twelve, depending on how busy the polling site is. And so my number one is in use, because I have a ballot up over there. My number two is ready to be used. If my voter over here were to touch the help screen, the help button, they're going to get help on the screen. But then at the bottom, it says, get help from poll worker. So if they touch that, they get a message that says a poll worker's coming to help them, and the poll worker gets the notice over there that they've asked for help. And if, if this happened to be a curbside voter, the new system, the tablet just needs to be unlocked, and it just rests in the cradle. There are no pins to bend and no cables to detach. And this goes out to the curb, can be handed into the window of the car. The voter can mark their choices. Once they cast their ballot, their choices are masked, and then they hand this back to the poll worker, so it's a private session. The poll worker just brings it in and locks it back in, and now the vote is sent over to the controller.
That's what I have a lot of in Batson, curbside voting.
So this tells you, so now it's going back to ready again. So if I'm the poll worker operating this controller, and I see my voter from number four walking towards the door, I can just glance down at my number four and make sure it's gone back to green and ready and not still blue, in which case I know they left their ballot up over there, and they might need to go back and finish the process. Another great thing about having the controller is you guys have our poll book already, our electronic poll book. The two systems that are required to go to vote centers in Texas are an electronic poll book, which you already have, and an electronic voting system. So if you were to acquire this one, you would have both pieces. So once a voter comes in and they present their driver's license, the poll worker operating the poll book swipes that or keys them in or however, they're going to look them up. If they're qualified to vote in that election, the little label printer will print out the label that goes on the combo form, and the voter signs a wet signature next to it. The second label will also print out with just a barcode for their ballot style based on the address in the voter registration list. So this one happens to be a precinct three oh three voter. This label gets carried to the poll worker that operates the controller. And all they have to do is scan the barcode, and it's going to give me a precinct three oh three code. So I say, yes, print the code. And then I get a randomly generated five-digit number that's for precinct three oh three. I just hand this to my voter, they can go to any one of my up to twelve booths they want to, put that five-digit number in, and they're going to give a precinct three oh three ballot. So if you're at vote centers, that integration right there is very valuable, because any voter can go to any vote center and vote, and if you're having to manually decide and select the ballot style, then it's going to happen that you're going to have poll workers make mistakes and accidentally issue the wrong ballot style. You probably have that now with paper ballots sometimes. With this integration, whatever ballot style they need based on the voter registration list is what they're going to get. So all the vote center counties are very interested in having the integration. And the other great thing about having a controller is all of your votes from all twelve devices are being consolidated in real time over there all day long. So you've got your consolidated count there when you need to post your voter totals on the door during the day. Anytime you want to reconcile with your signature numbers, you can. And at the end of the night, you only have one memory stick that needs to go into the tabulation room to be counted. With all the other systems on the market, every device has to be open-pole separately, closed-pole separately, votes harvested off of it separately. So that was another big reason why Jefferson County went with a Hart system, is that controller streamlines the end of the night process greatly and eliminates a lot of mistakes.
What's the connectivity of these?
It's a hard cable. We don't have any kind of wireless connectivity on this system. It has to be a closed system. And there are proprietary connectors, so it's not a connector you can just walk up and stick a cable into. And I'll be happy to show you those connectors, too.
Ken? Are you, is that it?
I guess so.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't talk to you about the early adopter program.
The early what?
The early adopter program.
Okay.
So, yeah, this, this is the big pitch. It's going to fall flat on its face, so let's watch that spectacular failure. So this system, we just received our federal certification last Wednesday. So that means we can now put it into the Texas certification, and the deadline for that was in May, so we were kind of nervous about making it through the feds and into Texas before that deadline. So now we know we've made it, which means we will have our final public hearing for certification in Texas on this on August seventeenth. So we can't enter into any contracts or ship any equipment that's not certified in Texas. But we, since Texas is our biggest market, we are offering an early adopter program here for any counties that have already decided this is the way I'm going to go. If you'll sign a pre-order, then we do a discount on the purchase, and we take back your old equipment, give you a certificate of destruction for that, so you can stop all the HAVA record, record-keeping for that grant money. And then you're on our short list of early adopters. We know how many machines to build, we know we're going to implement you. Almost none of the counties want to put a new system in place for the presidential election this year. That's just kind of a too big of a mouthful. So what we're doing is, if they want to sign the early adopter quote and get the discounts and all the other things, they don't have to take delivery of this system until after this November. As long as they take it before December thirty-first, we're happy. And then they can have their first election be May of seventeen with a new system, a little bit lower key election for everybody learning something new. And if you do the five-year payment plan, which most of the counties are doing, then your first payment would be December of seventeen on the new system. Thank y'all very much, and I'd be happy to let people come and play with it after court if anybody wants to.
Did the state has got to certify these now, and when will that happen?
The final public hearing will be August seventeenth.
And so shortly after that? Let's say that we decided to go with those, and then for some reason, the state didn't certify them. What would happen then?
I mean, it'd be void. We couldn't, we can't sell you something that's not certified. But the Verity one dot O has already been through Texas certification, that's the paper system. And so they've already seen our software, and they've already seen some of the components, so. There's basically no chance that it won't be certified, but we got to jump through the hoops.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions?
Ken, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
I'm over to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned?